We're calling to order. We're a little late, but we just had our, I think we may be our last person walk through the door. So I guess we called this order at the right time. Jeremy isn't going to make it, well actually he, I only got, I didn't get to respond to him. I got his email just before I left and he's coaching his son's baseball team up there. And which would be done in a week, I assume it's home. And he said, "I'm going to try to make it after," but I would be very surprised if he did, knowing how those games kind of they're total hate with you or whatever. So he may not, but anyway, welcome. It's been a month. Good to see you a little bit.
No, I haven't seen you guys. I miss you guys.
Very, very happy to have you back.
Been very busy.
I know. You would be here if you were not busy, sure.
Yeah, I was busy. That is fun. You guys are having more fun.
We are always having trouble. We come to board meetings, without a doubt. So glad you're back though.
Thank you.
All right. So welcome, everyone.
Yes.
We have staff. It's great. It's nice to have you here. Thank you. And I don't want to ever consider you members of the public, but you certainly are members of the public. You're a little, you're an elevated member of the public. So if there's anything you want to share with us right now, please do, or you're on the agenda, I'm assuming, for something else as well?
A slideshow. And I don't know when it's, I think when it's public time is when it's my time.
We can do a part of the report, or it should be early in the meeting if possible.
Okay, well, you know, I see absolutely no reason why we can't pop to that. Just after, let's do it right after additions or corrections, just in case. So right early, so you don't have to stay. I see you're working as you're sitting there anyway, both of you. And you Barbara?
I'm here in the event under new business NEAS, having led the way last time if there's any questions.
Thanks. All right. So additions or corrections to the agenda. I don't know if anyone has any?
Yeah, I think so long as we, you know, when we're going to do this, right, a little slideshow, short little slideshow.
We're going to do that. We just decided we're going to do that right off. Other maps? Yep. That's on the agenda. They just keep dropped off. Now I'm fine. I've got them. I just can't get them out of here. Okay. Now I can read the agenda. Sorry folks. It is the bane of it. All right. I don't have any other things to the agenda either. So let's go to members of the public, which means we're going to use them.
Very quick. I took students in April during the vacation to Italy. And it was a tour company called EF Tours, Education First. They've been around for many, many years and several of the faculty members have used this company before. Highly recommended them and I would too. It was great. It was incredible experience. I wouldn't say it was completely smooth as silk, but it was fabulous. And I just thought I would share some photographs, a little bit of the itinerary with you.
Yeah, that's great.
And I tried to consolidate eight days into five minutes. The cities are listed here. We flew into Milan and then we went to Venice from there. I went on this trip with Susan Jurgensen, 2002. I wonder if I'm going to sleep and it was really great. So I can't wait to see. I just want to play. Maybe I'll have to hit one at a time. I'm hoping I would have the fade. I had a timing. Oh, good. Seems like it's fast.
So was those airport photos?
I could probably pause it, but we left on a gray day, two o'clock in the afternoon, and we arrived the next afternoon. So it was an all-night flight. And this is in Paris. We have a six-hour layover. I think I'm going to have to hit each slide. I have a feeling.
Six-hour layover?
Yeah.
Yeah, in Paris. And then on to, a year and a half later, late meetings and many fundraisers, Venice.
Wow.
It's kind of, I don't know why I'm reading it, but it's, I don't know how easy it is to see that text. Oh, it is going. So there, I popped in some group shots, so you could see them. Twelve students, a variety, freshmen, freshmen, juniors, and seniors. And that guy there is my husband Brett, who was the chaperone. And I was the group leader. And this is before we boarded a ferry to Venice. And we went to a glass blower's first, Murano. And we watched a demonstration, two different demonstrations, and he made a very popular object. It's a unicorn. You can't see it. Within a minute. And it was incredible. And the glass work was outrageous. And then we went to the main island after that. This is on Google Docs as a presentation, so because it's in the wireless internet, I think that's why there's a little bit sluggish. And we had the opportunity to go to Bologna, which wasn't on the itinerary, which was a very lively city with a lot of arts and colleges and art schools. There was a film festival. I loved it. I didn't know anything about that city before then. These are two sisters. I don't know if you know the Griffins. Corian. Erlynne Griffin. Florence group shot. Very funny angle by Brett. It was extremely warm. It went from about 74 to 95 on the last day. So that's why we are dressed the way we have. Probably recognize that view. This is Michelangelo Plaza, looking down. A lot of people photographed from this spot, this city. That's the Florence Cathedral in the background, the famous Duomo. Chris Wilson, if you know him.
That's, did you say Florence there? That's Brunelleschi's dome. This is the most famous dome. Stone, masonry dome in the world. It's bigger than the White, than the Capitol Building. It's bigger than Hagia Sophia. It's bigger than St. Peter's. It's the largest dome in the world. It was built in 1156 or something. It's a fabulous story, Brunelleschi's dome.
Did you climb it, the dome? No, it was not open. You had to have reservations and tickets in advance. We went to Pisa. It wasn't also on the itinerary, but they offered it to us for free. And I wasn't sure if I wanted to go to this, you know, place that was to me more of a tourist. But it was incredible. It was beautiful. So we had, we traveled with several other groups and mostly two when we were on buses. But sometimes we would be grouped with four or five other groups. So this was on the ferry to Venice and back. And the bus ride was always an experience. Kids were sleeping a lot. I have a lot of pictures of them crashed out, but I thought that wouldn't be very interesting. Yeah, I'm clicking this and it's taking very long to go to the next slide. These two had a great time. They're very close friends. They're both seniors. Chiara and Alex, Chiara Wilite and Alex Topitzer. There were some of our other students in the back. We spent a lot of time on the bus. It was almost always an hour to two to three that we would be on buses. What I liked is you can't eat on the buses. So it didn't turn into a big thing all the time. This is out of order, I guess, but this is an example of one of the models that Brunelleschi made for the dome in Florence. The Duomo. The models were incredible there. And that was in a museum behind the Duomo.
It was a competition. It's the way people got the bid in those days.
Oh, this was such a modest model compared to the other ones. A C C, went to A C C, which was almost everyone's favorite place. And I think it was because it wasn't a city and the air was so clean and it was built up. It had some height. You could look down. It was surrounded by olive orchards. And it just was very, very peaceful. And it said City of Peace when you went there. And it was very, very magical, very special place. We didn't have enough time there. I would have liked to have spent a few more hours there. It was very beautiful. Because the cities are very chaotic for our kids. They're not used to it and it can be very overwhelming for them. But it was a good thing. So on to Rome, which was, which is large and crazy. Has anybody been to Rome?
Yep.
It's pretty wild. I loved it. It's an incredible place. So one of our students right here is, it's from the back of him walking in for the first time into the Colosseum.
A lot of cats.
There were no cats then. Somebody asked why, where were all the cats? They have a program now because it was getting so, it was overtaking the Colosseum. So they have a neutering program and people are actually adopting them and taking care of them.
Yeah, it works though.
Yeah.
It does work. Happens to it too.
Yeah, they had their hats on the whole time, unless, except for going into churches, basilicas, cathedrals, and dinner. I asked them to not wear it in restaurants or just at dinner. So every day they would just have these matted shapes on there. You know, the boys would take up the hats. I'd be like, "Oh yeah, that's right. You had a hat on." At the forum, Roman Forum.
Would the kids think of the Italian, real Italian food in Rome compared to in the States?
They loved it. That was a big part of the experience. Really just figuring out maps, not getting lost, the food, people watching. I mean, of course, all the EF is good about providing very, very good tour guides. Everyone is from the area. But they, the times when they were, had some freedom, when they were on their own and had to navigate. This experience, I think, was a big learning curve then. When we went to the Vatican, it was pretty, pretty rough because the new pope came out to greet everyone. So they set up all these chairs. So this was, and you can see they're even stacked. So this was full of people. And from all over the world. And it was pretty scary at times because we were packed everywhere. And people were pushing each other. We couldn't see a lot. And we all got out of there relieved. We, it was, it was, that was probably one of the more down moments. We, we couldn't wait to get out of St. Peter's because we couldn't look at anything. We were being pushed along. So I, these girls came out and I said, "Now pretend you're excited." Even though you were just saying, "Get me out of here" or something. And Gia has a very good expression, I think, for, because she's like, "Okay, Miss Naisio." I don't know if you know Gia, but she puts, she was a lot of fun. A lot of fun. But that was, that was, I put that on my comments, like, "That's probably not a good day for us to go." Because it's every Wednesday that he makes an appearance and he's new. And then, so everyone wanted to be there. It was right after Easter and it was, it was just inside the Vatican Museum. This spectacular ceiling with these incredible maps on the wall, these fresco maps. Has anybody been here?
I remember seeing that being very crowded as well.
Yeah, but it felt roomy compared to when we went into the Sistine Chapel and into St. Peter's. And in just getting like through that big castle. So they had this interesting moment after we got out of this situation. We went to this underground tunnel that went on for miles and miles and miles with these interesting mosaics. And they just were laughing and running and smiling and having a great time because they were finally with our one group and felt maybe they could put their guard down and they were excited. And that was one of the highlights. It was Wednesday before we were heading back. Because they were all laughing and smiling and running through these tunnels, all of them. It's very silly, but good. And I just couldn't stop laughing. We went into this church off the itinerary that had four Caravagios that were spectacular. Late Renaissance painter. Two more seconds. Don't worry, it's almost done. And if it was at a good pace, it would be five minutes. This was our last dinner Thursday night. And I don't know if you can tell, but just everyone was so relaxed with each other. Love that picture. We, we kind of meshed Mars group. That was a nice place. We had pizza that night. They ate a lot, I must say. And they ate a lot of gelato every, like, every day they were. Paris airport on the way back to Boston. Mixed feelings. Some of the older students didn't want to come back. Some of the students who'd never traveled away from their families before were homesick. So that was pulling them. But it wasn't a lot, it was kind of a sad, sad moment. We didn't really want it to end.
What was the length of the trip again?
Technically eight days. They call it a nine-day trip, but it's really, one of them's just all travel. So it was eight days.
How many days were you in Rome?
Three. Tuesday night, Wednesday, and Thursday. And we left in the morning that Friday. So it was more like...
Stephanie, this is your first time taking a trip abroad with the students?
Yes. I was a chaperone once, but the first time being a group leader. I think, I think it went well. I have some photographs that are quite nice, that are different than these, on a poster right outside the door that I just got to hang up today for the, since I've been back. Finally, I put up something for them to see. All right.
Do you mind if I ask, what was the price tag for you soon?
It went from 3,200 to 3,800 and something. And that, wait, did I just say that? Yeah. Like, within a 3,000-something range. And if you signed on early, it was cheaper. So closer to the time of departure, it went up. And then it covers airfare, all hotels, two meals a day, all the bus, the transportation, the tour guides. So what we fundraised for lunches and tipping, which is tremendous. It was a total of over $1,000 for tipping. So we raised over $1,000 to cover those things. And then students got money back, depending on how much they worked. So that went to their, some of their extras, like we went on a gondola ride. And that was, everything's very expensive. So all these little things we did, like going to Bologna, gondola ride. So they were very good about keeping track of their money and a lot of them were work jobs. And but they're very, I feel like, very responsible. They worked hard for it. I think they appreciated it. They didn't take it for granted. They were very invested in it. And we worked a lot as a group, which helped us, I think, when we traveled together to already make that happen, camaraderie. I was shocked.
Stephanie, that is just a wonderful trip, honestly. And thank you so much for sharing this with us.
You're welcome.
Because it's easy for us to forget, you know, that the connection with the kids, which really makes a difference. So thank you so much for bringing that to us.
You're welcome.
They looked like they had a blast. And you did too, I think, sure.
Guys, don't mind me while I...
Thank you so much, Stephanie, for everything.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions or other comments?
I'll just remind the public and the board that on Monday, we have a meeting, a WCSU Board Annual Meeting. And we're trying to make it an education fair and a real opportunity for people attending to learn about what we're investing in in terms of consolidated federal grants, what our collaborative effort is regarding professional learning and student learning and teaching. But I'm reminded by this slideshow that what, what we're not seeing on Monday is, we're incredibly not able to also show the whole child, you know, the other kinds of things that go into a well-rounded education. And that's a challenge for all our boards to think of ways that we can hold ourselves accountable as a school system to ensure those kinds of experiences beyond the test scores of math and point regards. Which is what's really driving most of the accountability systems in our, in our country. So I appreciate very much the investment and support of this kind of effort. Thank you.
Okay. You ready to move on? It's hard to, you're not going to be able to talk about it.
No, downhill from here, yeah.
So you might as well be prepared. So we're back to, if there's any other comments or questions, we're back to correspondence. And as you all know, it's a little bittersweet moment with our piece of correspondence that we're dealing with tonight. I hope you all did receive the letters from Tara. And I know all the rest of you are going right along with me and we say how very grateful we are for the years you've given to us, Tara, honestly.
Yes.
I'm glad that you're not leaving instantly when we know. So we have a little bit of time to spend with you, knowing that we're not going to be able to have that much more time with you. Here at these meetings, we hope we'll still be able to have time with you. And we're hoping that when that little baby comes along, you might pop into a board meeting someday.
Sure. Would you love to liven things up a little?
Watch you for an hour for me.
Grandmother will agree.
Yeah, sure.
But congratulations, Tara. We're thrilled for you doing. And we're going to miss you all.
Yeah, no, I'm going to miss you guys too. I mean everything that I said in that letter.
I know you do.
Hey, wait, I just want to know if we refuse to accept the letter, can she stay?
Oh, she can stay. I'm not sure she's going to pay much attention to that.
That's all right. As long as I've been on the board, Tara's been here. I think if she leaves, I have to go too.
See, I, I meant to take the time today to look when you first started.
I know someone else was asking.
I can figure it out.
We need you, Joe.
It's a long time.
Have some, have some. Thank you. It's nice to be needed.
You've been doing it since I've been on the board, pretty much, I think. You started maybe right after I got on the board.
Gosh, Tara will leave, the board will crumble.
Early, early 2000s at the latest.
I don't remember another note taken. I started in 99.
And so I didn't move back to Vermont until May of 2000. So it wasn't any before.
And I got on the board in 2000.
So probably 2000, March.
So I was thinking it was right about the time I got on the board. And that's a long time.
It is a long time.
You can collect your pension now.
Invest it. You're going to miss the, you're going to miss the board retreat in Italy.
You wouldn't do that. Top floor, Leaning Tower.
Don't worry. If you decide to do that, you'll be in heaven. All right. Well, we're glad you're not leaving right immediately.
Yeah, I couldn't do that. Too sad for me too.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. We're going to try to make it a really easy summer and look at our schedule and try to not have many meetings over the summer. And we'll understand when you have to.
Yeah, I mean, I...
It'll be up to you. We're very flexible. We'll figure out a way to deal with it if you can't make it.
That's no delivering.
No, that, that I wouldn't do.
All right. Administrative report. If there's no, is there any other questions?
I'll just take it that the board wants me to try to find somebody.
No. We're going to hope that we don't have anybody that she won't leave. No, I, we will leave.
A lot of pressure.
It's not instant, obviously, but it's...
I'd be looking though.
Well, the rules for board members are you have to find your own replacement, so.
I have no idea.
Because if you worked on it...
I think so.
We will never be able to replace her because there's never anybody that's done it. We'll find someone. She's stepping in. I know.
I'll send you all my documents.
You know, before we move on, I should just say that you really have had a unique way of capturing the essence of our meetings. And seriously, I guess I need you to say this because I have watched minutes from so many different organizations and meetings over the years, the many years I've done this work. And no one comes anywhere near to yours. And I really mean that. They're light years above everybody else. They just absolutely capture the essence of what happens at a meeting. And I really, really appreciate that. That's the part I think we might be able to recoup. Because it's a very, very hard thing to do. And it's why I refuse to take minutes, as you all know. You always heard me say that a million times. I, I can't do that. It's real stiff. So, thank you.
Boss, you know what I'm trying to say, well, people, well, I don't.
She's made us all sound intelligent and, you know, organized.
Shh, we're on to this.
And she's been...
Strike that.
She's had that resource of some file in there that she can go back to minutes forever and check for us what we're supposed to be doing. So again, we're going to miss that. All right, I'm done. I won't embarrass you anymore. Okay, so administrative reports, not this time. Principals report. We all did get a great packet from UST. I hope everybody got theirs.
Well, I'll be brief about some of the things that are more like highlights. And I know we're going to get deeper into the NEAS conversation. But I wanted to start the report by, with this introduction of the transforming views on teaching academic support. Because it's still only the second year that we are carrying out academic support classes in, in English. Now grades seven through nine, math also seven through nine, including Algebra I. And in science, we have it in grade eight this year. And I, the, and most of the teachers, if not all of them, and I got together and I did a focus group to find out. I mean, I hear from them individually how it's going, if they want more support, if, you know, I do informal observations. And I, but I wanted to hear from everyone because it is a shift in thinking that students, whether they are eligible for special education or in regular education, but for whatever reason struggle to perform at grade level, that they have 50% more instructional time than their peers, which allows their peers to go further faster in the regular classroom, plus be able to keep up with what's going on in class. And while there was, I would say, a variety of opinions in where it says your reflections, meaning the teacher's reflections, and I listed the general discussion of how I did. It was really funny because this whole year's emphasis has been on close reading. So that we have like chunk of text where a student will read a paragraph and they'll answer questions about it. And they'll be able to go on to the next paragraph because they had analyzed the first and understand it. It's supposed to skimming the whole thing and, you know, didn't really get it. So that, that's been a big thrust of our professional development this year. So the handout that I gave to them in advance of the meeting was of this format. So like you see, they saw the objectives listed and they had their reflection. So they like came in with their homework done. It was wonderful. And then so we could just share out. And they all strongly felt they needed to continue on this path, that they saw a real difference in the preparation, actually having, students actually having their work completed, but also the greater level of confidence in doing activities, oftentimes for the second time because they already had the pre-teaching of the lesson earlier. So this is exactly what we wanted to see. They did say that while they don't think they need more training per se, they wanted to work more with fellow department members on developing these devices to scaffold student learning. And that takes years to build, just like any teacher teaching a new subject area, choosing resources, designing lesson plans, getting feedback from your colleagues. That's what they would like to do. So, and I, this is great for us. And as we require students to perform at grade level, they need the additional support to address the gaps that they bring with them. Do you think?
If kids were asked what their thoughts are on this, would they give you honest answers?
We did talk about that possibility of conducting a student survey. It's integrated into the school climate survey where they're asked if they... It's integrated into the school climate survey, where they're asked if they participate in those courses. I can't remember if there's any particular comment about that, like just yes, no, rather than how is it going for you? But we did talk about that possibility, so I don't have an answer right now. I would be very interested in what the students have to say.
I think it'd be cool to hear what they have to say, and hope they would be honest and know it's anonymous and, you know, so they're not uncool if they say, you know, I really kinda liked it even though I had to pretend I didn't, you know, and stuff like that.
Any other questions or thoughts about it? Okay. So, the notification from the Agency of Education about whether or not we'll be making adequate yearly progress, while our scores have gone up in most categories on the NECAP exam, as you were talking about, Stephen, with the value or the performance of a school being measured on reading and math, not even writing and science, I would expect, just like all the other high schools, we'll be looking at a third year of not meeting adequate yearly progress based on their formula of the percentage that are supposed to have achieved at this level. Though, we did meet our targets in the reading portion for the juniors for the first time in many years, so I guess it might be time to raise that target from 70 to 75 percent or 80 percent. Yeah.
Always good to do that.
Yeah, and we just finished the science NECAP tests, and the students worked hard. You could see it in their responses to the questions. And what's so interesting is, and I guess I can just say this on camera, is that for students who really struggled on the test, they didn't have the courses because of the pathway they've been on in alternative education or at the career center, they did not, the sequence that of the introduction to chemistry and physics, biology, and then earth science that we have recognized students need to have, the access, you know, to actually participate in the Vermont Framework of Standards curriculum, and those who didn't really struggled on the test. Now fortunately, it was a small number of students, but that was, that was the difference. So, 'cause I would ask them, you know, why, you know, what happened here? And 'cause I'm supposed to, you know, review the test and make sure everybody completed it, was there for every day. So, just anecdotal information. And so the next area here around the SERV grant, we applied for it back in October and November, and only now did we get official notification from the US Department of Education. And I want to literally publicly thank Andy Snyder from the Vermont Department or Vermont Agency of Education, who shepherded our grant application through the labyrinth of the US Department of Education, which of course involves so many more people, and new town happens, and then I didn't hear from them for about six weeks, and a new person had to take over our application. And nearly $20,000 were already spent as a result of interventions that we had to take immediately after the suicide in the fall, and that is nearly all going to be reimbursed. So that's terrific. And the grant end date is, well, it's, you know, the areas that were reimbursed, the actual grant period is May 1st to November 30th. So there were parent education classes that we were planning, both in, at Leland and Gray and the elementary schools. We're not gonna do those until the fall, and we have this extra time allotted, so that's a, that's a great thing.
That is a great thing, and thank you for saying that. And it's very highly of you as well.
Oh. And I think that the last item on my report has to do with NEAS, so we can save that if you'd like to, to that part of the meeting, unless there's something that you wanna know now. I will just mention that there is a list SERV of Vermont principals. I did an interview, well, not an interview, I did a poll on math instruction, and that was featured in our last newsletter called Math Time Around Vermont, where dozens of schools responded to how much instructional time and what kind of math interventions they provide. And so this was similar, so who's a member of NEAS? Were you a member? What, what's the status now? And I was impressed by the number of people who responded, and they said, and we wanna know too. So, that's where the data came from primarily.
All right, so we'll do that, while we get to that on the agenda. Thank you, any questions for Durin?
Durin, I've had, this is a very unscientific survey, but I had a number of conversations with juniors mostly, boys, and it was pretty random, and I detected there was a theme of a number of them seemed to be struggling in math. And I, I thought of this mentoring, this peer tutoring that we talked about earlier, and I was wondering how that's, how that's going.
Well, there's two, two things that, two things we're doing around that. And yes, I would agree that there's quite a number of juniors struggling in math, and only about 25% of our seniors take math at all, because it's only three credits for, required for graduation. And unlike science, where 75% of our students take a fourth science, and now with our new freshmen, that they will have to. But the two interventions, the peer tutoring center, if a junior who is free pass doesn't have to go to the peer tutoring center. So if they, even if they're passing all their classes, they're eligible for a free pass, so they'll hang out in the activity room or be in the library, and they don't have to be in the structured center where the peer tutoring is available to them. The other intervention we've taken in this last quarter is the math interventionist, where we've hired a tutor to work with small groups of students specifically on the conceptual gaps in mathematics. And we have focused only on grades seven through 10, regular education students. So, for, for budget reasons, and also the juniors are just about to start their senior year, when most of them are choosing not to take math, so it didn't really make sense to hire the math tutor to work with them, and also, of course, it's a budgetary concern. But I absolutely agree that many juniors, particularly boys, actually, I shouldn't say junior boys, 'cause I, I can't say that quantitatively off the top of my head. I wouldn't be surprised, I would, usually the, the gender split in math, I would have to look at it, what it was for their full NECAP scores, but yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, your data is based on actual numbers, mine is very empirical. And I was just under the impression that explanations coming from a senior like your son would sit much better with them? From a, from, from another student who, who has actually done that course, and who has actually understood it, and who would explain it? Which brought back to mind the whole peer tutoring program mentoring that we had talked about, and I'm hoping that in future years, this will be something that will provide more help to the students. You know, hearing that 25%, only 25% of seniors are gonna be taking math, it is what it is, but you know, when you don't take those math classes, there's a whole bunch of options that are not gonna be available to you once you graduate.
I hope everyone hears that out there, because I talk about it endlessly. Another thing that the juniors have been held up by is two key delays. One was that those who didn't have Algebra in eighth grade, when they entered ninth grade, about half of them went to Algebra One Part One, or the College Prep Algebra, which included a little bit of Algebra Two, or they went to Basic Algebra. If you went to Basic Algebra, then in 10th grade, you went to Discovering Geometry, and then 11th grade, you did Algebra One Part One. So we can all hear why that's a problem. So there's no more introductory or basic algebra, they're all going in ninth grade to Algebra One. The other change we made is there's no more Algebra One Part One, one semester, Algebra One Part Two, a second semester, which also created a significant delay. So a student who, regular education student, who was just maybe a little more hands-on, a little slower in knowing his math or her math facts, being put into Basic Algebra freshman year would not get to Algebra Two, just run out of time. And so the, the thinking that students learn at their own place and place them where they're at, we're, we're not following that. We're placing them on grade level and providing the supports through the algebra support, the pay help in the morning and the afternoon, the peer tutoring center, and now the math interventionist, which I'm about to study now to see, to evaluate that program. So that's, I would say, the juniors are subjects of that system that is no more, starting with our current freshman. I'm really glad you brought this up, 'cause I think about it and talk about, I'm, I'm actually personally attending math interventions with a couple of students who are, who won't go. So I'm there with them, learning math along with them, and I spend an hour and a half a week there. That's how committed I am to, you need to learn math.
The force of exam.
Yeah, it is awesome. Amazing. Incredible.
Sometimes a little embarrassing.
What? I don't get it. Say that again. Is this what he means? Well, that too is a great example.
That is a great example, and just makes it real. Makes you like all the rest of us. All right. Any other comments?
Imagine trying to go back to school now to do math, I'd be lost.
It's much easier in the second term.
Yeah, that's right.
Really?
Yeah.
So they should go back then? Yes. Didn't like it the first time.
For some.
Let me go to English classes.
Yeah, but I, I just think. You've read already as adults to learn what algebra is than ever as an adolescent.
It's true, and there's a lot of things that, that challenge adolescents for learning, there's no question, including what we have on our, on our agenda tonight about changing our late starting. That's another challenge to adolescents. Are there any other comments or questions for Durin? If not, do it.
I think Baumner might be right, that peer tutoring may be advantageous. I would not be adverse to paying better students, I mean, you could come up with a qualification. I think that's something we could support in our budget next year.
We do pay peer tutors.
Well, we're already there, never mind.
Hold on, no, no, but it's either 21th century program, so it has to be before school or after school, we don't have a way to, a funding source to pay them during the school day.
Or if they're not paid, their, their effort is compensated by some credits that they earn in some shape or form.
They get credit for PTC now, right? The problem is more that the kids who need the help, once they get to be juniors, as long as they're not failing, they don't go seek it.
Right.
Not that there's, I mean, you know, I know of instances where, you know, there's tutoring going on, but once you're a junior and you don't have to go get it, you know, I remember kinda those years. Go to study hall and do that, or go play.
But you know, if, if, I don't know if the PTC earns credit to those who attend it as well or not.
Uh, yes, they can earn a half credit for whether, so let's say you're there every day for a, a long block, which would be a credit, so in PTC, if you, if you fulfill a certain number of hours, then of being, of tutoring or being tutored, you get a half credit elective credit.
So, you know, various ways of incentivizing.
Yeah, yeah.
But I do think the bigger problem is the cultural change, and now with, I mean, our eighth graders only know that there has been support for them through their teachers, through PTC, so it's part of the shift.
Best to start at the bottom and work on this. It's gonna take a little time.
Well, we try to get the other ones in, but it's, it's like, Joe, eloquently described, what's the choice?
Or realistically described, yeah, that's true, it's a challenge. So, taking us just a slightly different subject, but I had received, several people had sent this to me, including, I think Frank, you had followed forward it as well, the AOE's Innovative School. There were, there were two schools that were.
Worked for Innovative Schools, yeah.
Yeah, inducted into the Innovative Schools, and I worry very little about whether we're on some list, although there's a nice list of, there's 13 schools in this that are now in it. The two who just got into the Innovative Schools were CDU and M.A.T. But it did make me think a little bit about the incredible amount of work that has happened at Leland and Gray in the last two or three years under your leadership. And I would love to see us, we, we are recognizing it, and I would love to see us being recognized on a broader scale, and I'm not saying that we need to be trying for Innovative Schools or whatever, but I, I just wanted to say to you that I think we are an innovative school, and some of the things that we are doing today, I think are amazing. I, it, you know, two years ago, I would have never thought we were gonna be having these conversations around this table, that we have at every single meeting, and even if we're not on that list, I think we're going there. And I do think that with the challenges that we have today around, you know, the competition for students, and it's there, we can't ignore it, whatever we can do to let people know what's going on at Leland and Gray and the innovation that is happening, it is incumbent upon us to make sure that that's getting out there, because we have some really amazing stuff going on here. And I tell people, you know, that, you know, a lot of people have just an old perspective of things, and I, if somebody says something to me about, oh, Leland and Gray, you know, I say, well, have you checked out Leland and Gray lately? Have you heard, have you seen what's going on? 'Cause it's amazing, really. And so I hope that we can, if there's some ideas that we can have, we, we've talked about a summer retreat, or a retreat at some point here, and revisiting our goals and that sort of thing. I, I'd like to be able to continue on on the, you know, seeing what the board can do to support the innovative work that you're doing for our students, because I really think that while it is a very, like we just talked about, a slow process to see results, we knew that right from the beginning, you told us that the first month you came here, I remember, saying that it's gonna take a little time to make the turnaround, but some of it's happened a lot quicker than what we thought, honestly. And we're here for you, because we're here for the kids. So, any thoughts anybody has on this, or, or the administration has on this, or where we can go? I, I would love to see us.
Well, Durin and I have discussed that actual specific issue, but I do think that we should put, it somewhat relates to your issue about NEAS and accreditation via that, because what you're talking about there is recognition by some outside agency or group or whatever of the, you know, quality of education in your school, so.
To some extent, that's what I.
Yeah, the NEAS process is more, is more detailed, but I'm just saying that I think it does relate to later on in the meeting, because I know that I'm not going to be advising the board to take a precipitous decision regarding this NEAS question at this meeting. I think it takes some time to consider and to consult with the publics you've represented, please represent, so. And that may be a related question, is, is, you know, what are the, what are the things that, that can be done to make sure that we're properly monitoring and crediting the school with the progress being made? And that's what's part of Monday night's meeting.
Well, part, part of this is also, what I brought up was also bringing it to the board's attention, so that we can, you know, decide if we really wanna be that board who is supporting, not, not just supporting, but enhancing, you know, what's going on. And I think we can be, I think we already are, but I, but if there's an opportunity that any of you can think of, that we can have, or the administration can think of, this is a team, you know, effort on our part, working with you, so, that's what it's all about.
I think our whole SU is really kind of making forward movements by leaps and bounds. I see at Jamaica School, Glora does an amazing job, you know, she's an exceptional leader. And with the new consolidation, and when we went and all talked with the Wyndham Southeast, was it, and I was just amazed when I sat at tables and all these questions, you know, about, okay, does your SU do this? We do that. They didn't. Does your SU do this to do that? We do that. You know, it just, I was amazed at the things we do as an SU that I had no idea about.
And that's a, it's a very good point, we have come an awful long way in our SU, but we are nowhere near where we should be. And I think here at Leland and Gray, we feel it more than any of the other schools probably, because we're getting students. because we're getting students from multiple schools in the SU. And honestly, we're doing, we're going to stay focused at Wyndham Central. We're going to keep trying to, you know, discuss the collaboration we can do amongst each other here, but we should make absolutely certain that the fact that our governance system keeps all of us, to some extent, quite separate from each other, should not be holding back what we do here. You know, we actually need to leave, and I think we're doing that. And I guess that's kind of where I was coming from. Okay, anything else for Durin? All right, we'll get back to you, Durin. Stephen?
Oh, I put out my report.
Yeah, thank you.
I gave some hard talks to people here. You know, just to reiterate the perspective that I try to lend to this, is the difference among the schools, you see all the chart in my report, but the differences in pre-K opportunities. And of course, the towns that are not listed in that chart just mean that they contract out with it. So that, once again, is a reminder of how we are, you know, unique in every community. And Townsend will go to a full-time pre-K program this fall. And I know that's a big difference for parents in terms of their struggles with caring for their pre-K children, the education. In fact, the law permits, and I think the two boards means I have one more to go, with Wardsboro, where parents are appealing to the board to have money to support 10 hours of pre-K education outside of district at a private or public provider. So there were three such requests to Jamaica that were denied, respectfully denied. And that's really logical, because the boards don't have the money in the budget, and they can't be afford to spending it on somebody else's pre-K program when they're trying to provide their own. But that's what the law is right now. So the law, you know, obliges that kind of procedure and request, denial, or approval. The law may change, legislature may adjourn shortly if they haven't already, and we'll see what kind of things they have in store for us there, what comes out in the end regarding the compromises in the budget. But the other thing I wanted to mention from a broader point of view is on math. I want to remind the public that we all take a great responsibility regarding our influence on students and on our children. I challenge you all to go back over the past week and reflect on how often you met with a friend or had any conversation that had a mathematical aspect. Our society is not inclined to be person mathematically. In fact, many people take pride in being haters of math, or victims of math, or however they want to put it.
That's true.
And so we really have to reflect seriously on what our students, what children are learning from us. And certainly, if you believe as I do, that the greatest opportunity for students, our children, lies with those who are able to combine the creative, the literary, and the mathematical, analytical, I mean, those are values and skills that you can use in any occupation, any pursuit. So, but, you know, if we, if we, just try to use care in the way you speak or refer to your mathematical experience, or in your conversations. The other thing is brain development. What it reminded me of very much was that 20%, in a traditional educational setting, about 10 to 20% of 18-year-olds are able to deal well with calculus. And if you wait till 25 age, you're going to have like closer to 50% are able to deal with it. And if you wait till 35, 75% of the American population would be fine in a calculus course. They just don't bother going back to daycare. That, I mean, there are some brain, there's some studies on brain development in that regard. Now, one thing that we're trying to do in the WCSU K-12 is have this mathematics for all mazes workshops with Dr. Mahash Sharma that are talking about non-negotiable standards of numeracy initially, leading to higher levels of math, that are all related to both a concrete experience, and that's, if you come on Monday night, you'll see that concrete experience in action, and learn how it can make sense for students, and make the promise of education for all and mathematical literacy for all possible. That's the vision. It's going to take a long time, and it takes quite a bit of discipline focused by a math teacher like me, who failed my students often by accepting and assuming that they knew what they were saying, but they really weren't explicit enough and specific enough. And so, you know, because I'm a well, you know, I'm, I'm fine, you got it, I think. Anyway, okay, I got off the math ball, but now we're on to other things, two other things. Today, I had a very touching experience of attending at the Hope Flower, I think that's, anyway, farm. Anyway, this is a Families First event. This is a graduation ceremony. This is a commencement ceremony for students who have severe challenges in life, and they're overcoming them. They're making the transition from school and education to the world of work. And so this was a, I had the honor of presenting the diploma to Brian White, who was here many years. He's got his diploma, and I'm going to go make it on Saturday, we do it here, but it was a wonderful party, and a wonderful group of his peers, his friends, older and younger, and family. And that was, that was this afternoon. Then I also want to let you know that we will have two diplomas presented to Dusan Nikola Pantovich and Marina Pantovich at our ceremony. I think they'll be attending, and this is basically an outside adult diploma. And I presume recent immigrants to the United States from what I see here. But that's always good to celebrate that achievement, and that's what we're about here. What else did I have? I went to the Wyndham Regional Career Center Advisory Board today. Ellen wasn't in town, so she didn't make it. But Melanie Zolinski came, as well as pleased to see her there with me. And I did raise the issue of the WCSU joint study, broaden that to Wyndham Southeast Supervisor Union and Vermont Southwest. So that's been raised with all the superintendents there, including Nancy and Ron, and the superintendent from Hinsdale. So another issue I raised was the lamentable situation of transportation for our students in this valley, in terms of public transportation and access. And then the, let's see, there was one other issue there. Oh, I did point out that the Wyndham Regional Career Centers, like every other vocational center in the state, really has grave concerns about its funding. As you can imagine, federal government sources are shrinking. They really can't be expected to provide innovative programs and opportunities for our kids if they don't have a more dependable source than, you know, taking 10, 12, 15, whatever, students from our student body declining in enrollment to fund the programs there. And Frank and I have advised legislators about this issue. It's really, I think, something of serious concern by all, everybody in the county, it should be, and how are we going to present a secure funding base so that they can have innovative programs that don't necessarily have the students yet. Counting heads is not a good way to fund quality education. Okay, then we have Townsend. I met with Townsend, yep, just last night. She was actually quite late. But Townsend had two significant votes. Life is full of surprises. The Townsend Board voted that they would support the articles of the RED, proposed articles of the RED Committee Study, including a new building for Jamaica and Townsend. That's their official position at the next Red. Some people are smiling because they know they've changed their minds on that. But anyway, that was the official board's unanimous vote. Then the other thing that happened was that they voted, after a long debate, they voted to end school one day earlier, the plan, and convert that to an in-service day. Now, the reason I'm smiling about this is, was not the recommendation of the administration, but the board members said, well, you know, we actually think that we should have our kids out of school on Friday like Leona Gray. It ended up where they're going to end school on Tuesday. They won't have that Wednesday. The other principle, I raised this with the principal before. I mean, you know, I had this strange idea that coherence and working together would be good, but, you know, I don't want to be too bleak with my humor here, but I had this meeting with the principals a couple months ago, when Durin presented to your board the necessity and the reasons for converting student instructional days to in-service. And of course, the same argument could be made in other places, but you do have some unique circumstances in this building. And so that opportunity was provided, and the other principals declined to change the end of the year. But, and that, I haven't canvassed, I got emails, I'm in the process, it took me a number of hours, I'm still going to work on it. I'd like to see what happens, but it looks to me like Townsend's going to be a little bit different. And that is the authority of you as a board to make decisions for your local district. And it's a reminder of the challenges we face in administration, getting things together. Thanks, sir. Any, listen, any questions?
I guess that's, relates to what I was sort of lamenting on your comment, Patty.
Well, I just want to encourage you two to come Monday to this, you know, WCSU Board meeting. It's really a little bit of a business meeting, but then it really is education here, if you've read the thing I put out. I hope you'll come away from it and give me feedback about what you learned and what you didn't, and what you'd like to know, because it is different, it'll be a different experience for you in terms of your own learning and insight into the school and professional development and student learning. I, you know, I just had a lengthy conversation with the Dover Board, and in public, they were concerned that this was all just making everybody feel good, and we really weren't looking at the individual scores of individual schools, and we should be looking at that more, which is, I think, not the way to go together in the woods, but, you know, that's...
So Townsend said yes to a joint Townsend-Jamaica school?
That's their position.
The board did.
The board did.
They had, they had taken.
What had the Jamaica Board, what was their position? If they had taken a position?
Jamaica Board was the one who proposed it originally.
Jamaica Board originally proposed it, but I think they explicated on it somewhat too, but they, at one point, we had a RED meeting where the Jamaica representative, or at least the other one besides Bruce here, said, well, look, if Townsend isn't going to be in with the building, the new school, then we're out of here. We're not going to.
Yeah, we don't want to talk about governance. And it set it back when Wyndham was no longer a part of it as well. That kind of made, I think, Jamaica take a step back. They had thought that not only would it be Wyndham and Townsend and Jamaica, but that it might even attract a school like Wardsboro if their enrollment had to decline or something to that effect. So that's when the first conversation started about the building of the school. It evolved a lot from there, so, you know.
The Townsend Board, school board, is under tremendous heat and pressure from its own town members, at least some pretty outspoken town members. It's not even a show, that the building has to stay with the town. And actually, the school board last night commented, well, that would be fine, because what do we know to do with an extra building?
Then there's no additional cost.
Let the town of Townsend take care of it, you know. I mean, it is an interesting angle. But anyway, the Townsend Board has taken a position, which I think is, can move the conversation on a bit at the RED Committee, and their position is, look, the people of our town should decide this issue. And I think that that is commendable.
So the next RED meeting, since we don't have it on the agenda, I'll just say it right now, the next RED meeting is June 5th. We called the last one off because with some unfortunate circumstances that happened locally, we didn't get, we weren't going to have a forum, so we called the last one off. So we haven't met since.
Yeah, there's been no development. I just mentioned this, but.
Those meetings are here?
They are here. They are here, and this one will be as well. So it's June 5th at 7:00, the next RED meeting. So you're all welcome to come, of course, if you want to know what's going on. And again, because it's not really on this, but Stephen mentioned it in his report, the next Monday night meeting, which was moved from the Wednesday night meeting, the Wyndham Central meeting, even though Bruce and Joe, you are the two representatives besides me on that, and I'm assuming you're going to be there, but I wanted, thank you for both being there, I'll be there too, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows. This is a little bit of a different format, as Stephen mentioned in his report, and I hope you all come. You know, you're certainly all invited.
You will get out tomorrow, I hope tomorrow late, maybe Thursday morning, anyway, get out the report and the information that we usually had at this annual meeting that was sort of presented by PowerPoint or, you know, something else, because I'm trying to make sure that the board has the information, but I don't really think that it's a good use of your time to stand, to sit patiently and listen to me blabber about something or, you know, even as entertaining as Frank can be, listen to him for one. So Frank's off the hook entirely, he's going to be just mingling with the crowd, except for presenting the auto report, he'll be in good shape.
And the meeting starts at 6:30, but only for the voters, I guess, is the business meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, 6:30.
At 6:30, and then this, so if you can't make it till 7:00, that's fine, because that's when the whole regular meeting starts. Okay. Any questions for Stephen?
Are you going to be at the Jamaica meeting? Please?
I will be at the Jamaica meetings whenever I can be. What's the next one? I don't have it in my head.
Well, they'll encourage you, they'll move on to Frank while you guys are having that conversation. So Frank, you got a report?
I do, I have a financial report. It's a single sheet, double-sided, if you want to take one, as it comes around. So this report is year-to-date through April 30th. Amazing, we only have two more months of the fiscal year, but we're wrapping up a good year. So in the report, on the revenue and expense side of the document, we have the budget $6,552 for revenues, you see, with $4,997 received, with $1.5 million as still receivable. And as many of you know, several of our towns pay the fourth quarter taxes in May, late May, so that's not unusual for us to have significant receivable at this time. I reported earlier about our concern around the public tuition, the revenue versus the actual. We do have some towns that are processing our second semester invoices, and we will receive more on that first line. You see, $262,000 still as receivable, but we are going to be short of the $990,000, because we did have students leave during the school year. So I'll keep you posted on that, but it will be a factor that we'll have to deal with in our budget deliberations for fiscal year '15. As you've heard, Durin has done terrific work in some of the grant areas, and there will be some favorable offset of our loss of tuition revenue through the additional grant resources. But of course, keep in mind, grants have a specific purpose, so it's not a supplanting if there's grant money and it will fund a specific program, and it's somewhat of a I do expect, on our special education budget, it's our only other major source of revenue, you see in this statement, that it'll probably be a little bit favorable. We'll probably receive more revenue than expected because of the types of reimbursements that are available to us. But overall, our revenues will probably be a little short of the plan. And on the expenses, if you go down to the bottom there, $6,552, again, balanced budget, because we didn't have a surplus deficit in the prior year. We have the $987 still. We have the $987 still to spend against our budget plan. That is about 15% of the total and that's a, you know, typical two-month position to be in. And there will be pluses and minuses, but most of them are attributed to the programs that Durin has been able to fund through these additional grant resources. So you'll see some variances as we get into June, but the variances are paid for generally through the revenue, the additional revenue. And Durin mentioned tonight, the Student Assistance Program and the other Crisis Intervention Grant are just a couple to name a few. The other area that you see a variance is, I think it's already showing up now, yes, professional development. You see about two-thirds of the way, you get that $44,000 budget and we spent $63,000, but that 18 is funded through federal grants, additional federal grants that amendments have been named and approved by the state. So we expect to see great things as a result, as Durin has reported. So the other side of this document is the balance sheet. Of course, our most important, you know, control document, we've got the bank processing thousands of transactions and millions of dollars on our behalf. We reconcile it to the bank account, of course, monthly, and that gives us an assurance that the revenues recorded, the expenses recorded, you know, properly reflect the transactions of the district. So the balance sheet is in, I would say, typical condition at this time of year. I mentioned, we have a significant receivable from our fourth quarter taxes. It creates a cash flow deficit. That's why you see the negative number under the fund balance, not unusual. And of course, that's why I asked the Board to approve the tax anticipation note. You see that liability there, a million dollars that funds our cash flow. But at the end of June, we expect to pay that million dollars off and we probably will have somewhat of a negative fund balance because of the revenue shortfall. But it won't be an order of magnitude that we haven't dealt with before, so I think we will carry on. So is there any questions I can answer?
So you anticipate this variance in the special ed to be pretty much covered?
Yes.
By revenue.
By revenues. That will offset that. So this, I think the special ed preliminary report is that it's not going to be significantly different than the plan. There are different funding sources and things did change according to what we envisioned. But when you take all the pluses and minuses, they're gonna net out pretty close to our million-dollar commitment to special education.
If we didn't have changes in the special ed, it would be weird.
Yeah.
I mean, you just can't.
The earth would stop spinning.
Yeah, you know, it's just the nature of the business.
Yeah, we'd have to be bigger to avoid experiencing those changes, that's the thing.
Yeah, that's true.
If we were-
Bigger would be-
If we had 10,000 kids in this, you know, SU, then we wouldn't see that vary, that-
Do any of our special ed kids go on to some sort of higher education or something? How are they, do they do well? Are they doing?
Well, I think we could actually undertake a short report on that. I think that this, you know, this family's first program they went to today is the most needed, you know, the needed. And so they certainly are becoming gainfully employed and so, which is quite, in the community. So that's a wonderful thing.
It's all testing.
Then you have the other, I, well, I'd have to go in executive session to tell you something. I could tell you something about one of our present high school students that's quite an example from investment in special education from a very early education age and reaching the highest recognition levels academically and socially.
So we have a good special ed program?
Well- It's the envy of a lot of other places because it is, if you visit the in-house, in programs, right?
Intensive needs, yeah.
In program here at Leland and Gray, just off the foyer of the gym, you'd be quite impressed with the level of engaged learning and skills being developed for students, the most severely handicapped to become more independent.
And while we don't need to get into this too deeply, I just wanted to mention that we've had quite a lot of support from Abby Dillon, who spends quite a bit of time at Leland and Gray.
About half her time, she's here.
And that was based on need, you know, but, you know, we're getting that support. So it's great that she's here at Leland and Gray, working with Durin.
The possibility of doing postgraduate surveys is something that we're very interested in doing, but it is not a small undertaking.
Yeah, I know that.
We did study one Leland and Gray program and engaged two administrative assistants to contact about 40 graduates of a program we have. And we didn't actually release this information, it was an internal review. And an enormous amount of labor goes into that and great difficulty in actually tracking down the students. But that was an impetus for the Rockwell Center Schools to make significant changes when, based on those postgraduate or post-secondary studies, to find out what happened to the students. That's where they found things like the students who completed pre-calculus were most likely to finish college within four years and, among other things, so.
Yeah, it's always a challenge following up after they leave here.
Yeah, I mean, there are, I mean, they worked with a company that did the research for them, but it has a price.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So I would like to answer your questions definitively. I can only say what their course enrollments are, what the NICAP data shows, which is that they perform lower than the state average at Leland and Gray, and anecdotal information about how so-and-so doing.
Any other questions about this?
Hey Frank, I just got one question, just looking at these values, the way I understand it, is there a chance with like the operation and maintenance of plan, I'm just looking at the variance left for that, pretty substantial number, $97,000 with the time of year that's left, is there a chance that some of that monies won't be spent or is that pretty much budgeted in a way that you'd expect all that to be spent or something like that?
A large portion of that is, includes our capital plan. And there is, there is a fair amount of work that's in process right now around the ventilation system.
Right, yep.
So we probably will see that spent. Ed is very, you know, very careful about making sure he does fully utilize the resources that he has available and-
I figured that. I was just, I'm looking for, you know, I was looking at maybe is there some opportunities and that figure just stands out as a decent cost, decent amount, you know?
It is, yeah. But I do expect that to come in pretty close to budget.
Okay, based on what we committed to do and what we still have left to do with the building, okay.
Good eye.
Well, just two quick things. One is the ventilation system is about $11,000 and then you may recall, the capital plan calls for buying a tractor this year to replace our very old John Deere mower. And so those-
Those are major items in that $100,000.
Those two items will cut in a lot into that $97,000.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions? Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, all business. Staff's report.
Not too much to report on that.
Nothing except that-
I said pretty much everything about that.
We're in one.
Sorry.
Okay, anybody have any questions about that, joint SU study? There's not really much that's gone on. You'll be updated as we move forward. WCSU Board Executive Committee, you put that on there. Do you just want me to report on the meeting that we had?
There were two decisions, though, under the joint-
Right, there was, we held a executive committee meeting to do the superintendent evaluation, which we did do, which we hope to complete as soon as possible. We talked about the joint study and actually voted to join this joint study with Wyndham Southwest. And the other thing we did was, we did vote, as you guys had hoped we would at our last meeting, on if the Red was formed, we would have to change our voting structure at Wyndham Central, and we voted on option D, as this Board had suggested we do, so.
Which was retain the balance of power we had now.
It wasn't unanimous, but it was, it did pass on the second vote. There were two votes on that one. Anything else from that? Any questions about executive committee? Just so you know, we're operating a little more at that level at Wyndham Central with the executive committee as opposed to the full Board. But the next meeting is full Board. Prospects of late starting?
Well, yes.
This was what we asked you to report back on.
Yes, you did. And I do have, I'm just showing you visually the research and the papers I've got back on this, including the articles. So two things have happened since we last met, is that I solicited reports, information from Brattleboro Union High School Principal Steve Perrin and from the superintendent. I have copies of those responses here. Those were shared with the ATM, with the principals' meeting. We have a Google Doc within the ATM, the administrative team meeting, we have a Google Doc folder, the document where people added, brainstormed, listed their pros and cons about this, the cons far outweighed the pros, I mean, that was too surprising. People are not likely to want to change. But I know that from a financial point of view, we don't have sufficient funds unless Leland and Gray were able to take it on to hold the move harmless against the school districts that are part of the union, Leland and Gray. Specifically, Wardsworth, it was estimated something like $10,000 if I'm ballpark figures, isn't that correct, Frank? There was another questionable amount that would depend on how many students we had living in various neighborhoods in New Fane, but that could mean another $7,000 there. But that really, it waits until we got the bus routes going for next year. And what this reminded me of was that we just were not able to have our act together sufficiently to budget those monies to implement such a plan for this fall. And I, as an advocate of this, I feel very much disappointed about that issue, but I know it takes a long time for people to wrap their heads around such change. And I have not frankly received a positive response from other Boards when I've raised this issue. And it's hard to leave where people don't wanna go, so.
So if we had a late start at Leland and Gray, does that compel the other schools in the WCSU to also have a late start?
It actually varies quite a bit. A town like Wyndham would be completely, would have their own bus system, so they really would change probably their start time by 15 minutes, be 15 minutes earlier. 8:15, I think, was, I should look up the charges, I don't miss quote. But anyways, Townsend, for example, would start the same time as Leland and Gray. It has to do with the bus transportation system, having the kids around.
There's an adjustment at every school.
There's adjustment at every school. Marlborough's been dealing with this adjustment.
For Brattleboro.
Because they tend to sell their kids to Brattleboro. But anyway, the time-
Is it mostly money that they're having issue with or?
No, no, people have emotional issues about it. You know, who's gonna take care of my kid in the morning? I have to go to work and, you know, my, or, sorry, in the afternoon? Who's gonna take care of my younger child coming home when my older babysitting, you know, sibling isn't home?
Yep.
Now, of course, the 21C program does something-
I don't get that.
Yvonne?
I don't get that one.
Okay.
Aren't they, are they coming home at the same time right now?
Yeah, well, yeah, you're right. I got that, I got that one backwards. Yeah, I got that one backwards. We're starting, no, we're starting later, I'm right.
If the elementary kid doesn't start later, if the elementary child doesn't start later, then that child- But if this is implemented, it's implemented at the whole SU level, so everybody will be starting later.
Well, no.
We're only talking about Leland and Gray.
Well, that would be a possibility. You're right.
That's what you'd want.
There are places where the elementary schools and the high schools, and everybody starts later, okay?
That makes sense.
About 8:30 or something. Well, the problem with us is that we want to economize on transportation.
Right.
We don't have sufficient buses, capital investment, to make an efficient system like that. So we're dependent on these double run situations.
It's why the schools start at different times.
And, you know, it's a shame to say that-
So if we start early, some of them have to start later, which means the little kids will get home later, the older kids will get home a little earlier, I mean, vice versa.
The younger ones get home a little-
They start later, they get home later. So the little ones come home first and they're-
Right now, the little ones come home, just they end later.
Exactly, most of them do that.
Yeah. Leland and Gray ends at 2:30, and the elementary schools end around 3:00.
So the older kid's there to take care of the little one and then come home.
There is concern about the sports, the effect on sports. This is always raised by any school system proposing this change.
Especially fall, darker.
Brattleboro, I mean, I have from here, our AD has worked very hard to minimize this, but it is a constant challenge. They have an assistance program like we do here at Leland and Gray, a period does help because they scheduled that period in such a way that students could access it earlier in the day. But they, you know, I do recognize that the bigger schools such as Brattleboro, they have lights. I mean, they could have a game later in the fall and it wouldn't, you know, be called off because of lack of light. And so I do think things can be-
There's a stand goal for the parents watching.
Well, it is, yeah. I mean, I think that the, yeah, well, I know that the problems can all be overcome with sufficient political will and consensus of the public to do so.
Right, so let me ask you two questions. What is your recommendation? Because the Board, I think, gave you direction at the last meeting to try to-
To report.
To try to get a response.
To see if I could do it this fall, yeah.
So is there a recommendation coming from the administration? I don't mean just you, I mean Durin and Frank, who's working on the other part of it too.
Right.
And then, well, I'll let you do that first.
Well, my recommendation is that we can't, I can't pull it off this fall. That I suggest that the Board raise this issue at a WCSU Board Retreat this August because we all recognize, as Vom said, that this has to be a collective WCSU issue, although there are some towns that don't, aren't obliged to send kids here, and there are independent school districts that have a different bus system. Generally, it's a point of interest. What I would suggest, though, is that it be combined with, and under the general umbrella thought of, how do we best use instructional time that we have contracted for with our professional staff? And use our resources then more effectively to maximize the learning opportunities and the instructional, you know, for students. And so that's where you get into developmental differences of when would be the best time to start classes or how to schedule classes. Now, when we had this discussion at Townsend last night, you know, there are members of the community who believe, "Look, you have to learn to get up on time and get to work. This is what our industrial and, you know, life is like in the United States." Well, there's an argument for that. But on the other hand, we no longer have child labor, you know, and there is a developmental difference between someone who's 21, having to get up and getting paid bucks, and somebody who's getting up at 15 and is, has, you know, no particular incentive to get to school. So I think from, well, so bring it back to a bigger picture. What about the school year calendar? The year-round calendar? This is something that Townsend School Board is very interested in. This is something that the Dover School Board is very interested in. I'm very surprised to see that, but please, in other words, you'd have a year where the summer vacate is shorter, but there are the, I showed you visually this before.
Different issue.
Well, excuse me, I mean, I think that if we want to get to- Well, excuse me, I mean, I, I think that if we want to get to, to on, I mean, you, I can take it apart. We can take, you know, it apart and separate them. But I see the year-round calendar also, a use of time that we control, that is a valuable resource to maximize learning and to reduce the amount of instructional loss or forget, forgetting that happens between years and between courses. So you asked me for a recommendation. That's where I think we have to go. I, I, I keep, you know, if, if you had the power and authorities of Leilona Gray School, which you do, to just set your time and let the rest of the district deal with it, you know, that's a political issue.
So, so that was, I mean-
Is education political? Yes.
So if we, if we think about students, though, student learning, they do work till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. And that's why they need to sleep a little later. They actually do, Durin, you probably have the studies, but I just see it firsthand, that they really do work late. And, I mean, they just, they seem that they're wired. So I think it is a separate issue than this year-round versus start time. To me, it's, they're not necessarily combined.
If I can, I want to thank you for pursuing this after our conversation at the last board meeting. I know that people don't like making changes to long-established habits. I know that there's some very practical inconveniences to this, to changing the school level. But there's a reason why we're suggesting this. There's a reason why we think it's a good idea. It has to do with, we're not going to get into it, but it has to do with the, with the way the teenagers' bio rhythm works. They just more alert later in the day. So, and, and now that there have been more, more and more schools have been doing it for a number of years, we have some quantifiable data that shows that it works. We have better SAT scores, we have lower absent, we have, there's a lot of good things that happen to this. So because of that, it's worth keep, keep trying it. And trying to educate and explain the position and say why this is a good idea. It's going to cost more money, it's going to be inconvenient, we have to change long-established habits, but there's a reason why we think it's a good idea to do.
So I think what, what Stephen's suggestion was, and it was, my second question was going to be, what can we do as a board to get this to happen? Because clearly we seem to feel committed here at this, we haven't taken a vote, but we did vote last time to have Stephen pursue it. So maybe we really need to get some muscle behind this at the WCSU level. We, we can do what you said and just change our start time and let the chips fall where they may, but that's really not the collaborative, you know, process that we would normally go.
Well, I'm just trying to point out what the extreme positions can be on this and how we, as we decide what the best political path is. I also would suggest, if we are serious about it, Leilona Gray as a board and a school, a union school district, that we, we look, ask Frank to look in detail, ask me to make sure we put together a plan that is specific about the costs and the impact of the cost on our sending districts. Now, you should be particularly concerned about the impact on a school district that has choice, a neighboring school district that has choice. I would suggest, if you don't begin to consider how you're going to subsidize transportation to enable those students to attend Leilona Gray, you're not, you can't expect, you can't expect to be recruiting them or attracting them. I do think a later start time is an attractive element, at least insofar as not every school has gone to it yet. But if I'm comparing to go to someplace else and I have to get up at a quarter till 6:00 to get to school, and I have another place that I can get up at a quarter till 7:00, I'm probably going to pick the school a quarter to 7:00. Most of us who've been to college decide that we either like to get up early or don't, and then we pick our classes accordingly. Kids in public schools don't have that choice.
So because it's getting late, where, where are we going with this then?
We should continue looking at the costs and, and probably put together what an implementation plan would look like, you know, how much it would cost and, and, you know, how we would roll that out.
I mean, we, we clearly are pretty passionate about it here on the board. Can I ask the administration again, is this something that you really feel like we do about?
I'm passionate about it, I brought it up to begin with.
And I'm asking during, too. Is it the kind of thing where we need to continue to pursue it? Because if we do, then we need to make a decision about how we're going to go forward with it.
So you need like a year, like not this fall, but next fall? I mean, how much time do you need?
As long as it takes.
Well, I mean, I know-
It took Brattleboro three years or so, two years.
So we've got, we've got six months.
I mean, I really am serious about asking Durin, too, because I, the reason I say this is because, I mean, I have kids and I remember what it's like. But I am assuming that everything that we've said is the truth here. Is it something that you would like us to continue to pursue because it's going to help our kids with their learning? That's what we're trying to do.
Go ahead. I mean, good answer.
Now that makes it difficult, but that feedback makes it tough to suggest.
I, I represent a lot of constituencies. And I am aware of the research. I'm also aware of other factors that affect student learning. I am very interested in the year-round schooling because the biggest gaps tend to emerge in summer. I'm concerned about the number of families who take vacations during the school year when, and if we had more frequent breaks for a week or two, that they could plan accordingly as opposed to, this is when the cheapest flight was and, and you don't have any vacation near it. I, I, there was even a report on VPR this morning about the Chittenden South and other CSUs in that area. Including Grand Isle County, looking to have year-round schooling and have it no, result in no increase of costs for them. But they're specifically looking at, what Stephen was referring to, is, is the summer gap that, and the older they get, the, the larger the, the gap. And the gap narrows through the school year, summer vacation, and this happens, that a student has a experience of, you know, rich summer of, of travel and, and camp or a pre-college experience, and others are sitting in front of the computer all summer long, not doing educational things. So there are so many concerns about any kind of fast change that there is a lot of groundwork that needs to happen. So I think the timeframe that Brattleboro went through and all of the community forums, all the education that went out, educating the community, getting feedback, trying to address the concerns before making a change, would be the most democratic way to proceed. That, that's, that's my, I, my feeling about it.
Would it take away time from things that are already in the process and that you're working on to improve education here? Would it negatively impact the progress on those initiatives, do you think?
I am concerned about a late start in terms of its impact on faculty meetings, which is always devoted, and Barbara can attest to this, to professional development. And if it started at 3:15 or 3:30 and go to 5:00 or something, I think it would be really tough to bring in and pay trainers to, to have really effective professional development during that time. Another concern that is raised is that we have about 30 high school students who are employed by the 21st Century Grant, and they ride our bus to New Brook, to Townsend, to Wardsboro, and our counselors and have, you know, basically job training, that's paid, excellent learning experiences, and are taking on increasing levels of responsibility at these schools where they, they arrive and that's about when those students are, are then out of school. So if we had a later start and they ended earlier, we would have a half hour, 45 minute gap where those students wouldn't be able to access their employment and the need for the childcare wasn't met. So that's, that, that is a significant concern, given that we're, the, the number of students and the lack of employment in the area. And for some of these students, they start a little younger in their mentoring into becoming counselors, so it's really grown into its own career preparatory entity. So there's, these kinds of things that are, would have to be all part of that dialogue.
And to reiterate something Stephen mentioned about kids needing to be in the habit of getting up to go to work when they get out of high school. I mean, we, we hire a whole bunch of recent college graduates and, and, not, not college graduates, recent high school graduates and summer help, help kids that are in college. And we fire more people for not coming to work on time than all other reasons combined.
So.
What, just to point out, though, like, then that probably means that what we're doing right now isn't preparing them.
Clearly.
True.
I mean, it's, uh-
What time's starting?
Depends on life.
Maybe, maybe-
We run 10 different time shifts.
I, I would argue that if we started at 6:00 in the morning, we'd probably still have the same kind of problems, but I know we'd have better, poorer attendance at 6:00.
An important, one of the concerns that Brattleboro had was the number of, of students arriving late. And that we cut down significantly by enforcing a policy the first year I was here. Last year, we made the rule that you had to come to school by 9:30 in order to participate in co-curricular activities. And this year, we changed it to 8:30. So it's kept cutting down, and now we're talking about late at all. If you arrive after 7:50, you've foregone your co-curricular, unless you have an excused absence, you know, of doctor's appointment, et cetera. So there have been another way, a different way to get around that for equal results.
Well, as a board, I think what we need to do is support what's best for our students. And, you know, I'm not here in the building, you are. I have kids, but, but they're grown now, so-
What time they get up?
They get up at the time to hold their jobs, that's for sure. But, you know, I, I guess I would ask, what direction you want us to take? I mean, it, it sounds just like a slower, more, you know, methodical process is what Durin is suggesting, and you're getting a lot of pushback from other school districts in our-
Yeah, I, I have to say, you know, principals are actively reflecting what they, they encounter when they raise the issue with their faculties and with parents. You know, everybody can think of a million reasons why not to do something and just stick with what we got. This is the big problem, challenge that Durin faces instructional here in the schools.
Of course, it's no reason, and just like Yvonne said, I mean, and, and I mean, I also feel like the issue around faculty meetings and professional development, we value that, and we're going to figure out a way to address that. There's no question we would have to. And, and even though I totally agree with you about the counseling, the students that are doing that, you know, we've got, we're thinking of a full student body, not just a group of 30 students, so we have to figure out a way to address that as well. So, you know, there's no question. And I guess that's what takes me back to the question that you're saying, we don't have answers to these concerns yet. And maybe we need, i- if we really are serious about doing this, maybe we need to ask you to get more answers to those, or is that what the board, does the board want them to continue to pursue this, based on what you're hearing tonight, I guess?
Do, do we know where the community stands on this? Have we ever really gotten much input?
No, I haven't, I haven't approached the subject in a widespread, uh-
I mean, is that worth it at this point?
Solicitation for feedback. We've only gone, Durin's gone to faculty council and certainly discussed it with the faculty and the other faculties, the other principals have certainly raised it.
And student council, what kind of-
Yeah, interestingly, student coun, go ahead.
They're post, but-
They are post, but-
Absolutely.
Yeah, they're, I mean, it-
Why? Yeah, what was that?
Co-curricular activities, especially students who participate in both theater and athletics.
Right, pretty challenge for them, yeah.
We've got a lot of those. And they represent a particular constituency of CSU.
It's a reminder of how difficult it is to change.
Since we're still way late, I'm looking for direction to wrap this up, to move on. Go ahead.
Is there any priority between changing the starting time versus a program of going to a 12-month? That came up here. And would one work better than the other, just in terms of what needs to be done?
The idea that Dover and Townsend are interested in a more of a year-round calendar is very exciting and working collaboratively. And if these two time-related initiatives come together, perhaps that, that, I think the spirit of collaboration would be very important.
Then would it be more important to have the WCSU, have a CSU meet, WCSU meeting, discuss this whole thing of going to a 12-month?
So, so that was going to be my suggestion. Maybe we ought to consider asking to put it on a WCSU agenda.
I think that's essential.
And then, and then that requires a commitment by this full board to come to the WCSU meeting, I think.
And I, I do think that the, although my mother was urged or to make these things separate, I really think, if you think about it more, if we're trying to do something to improve learning for students, we have to explore all the possibilities. And it may be because of the entrenched traditions, interests, whatever, of, of the families and students that we serve, that the idea of changing to the late time, regardless of what research says, regardless of what the positives will be, is in fact something that we can't pull off. Or, you know, it's going to take longer to be able to get that. Whereas it, you know, if you go to a year-round school, you're not necessarily changing the start time or the end time. You're changing some other things that create some other problem, but you're not, you've already addressed the issue about these counselors at 21C. You've already addressed the issue of, of, you know, $10,000 more for a bus run in Wardsboro. I mean, in other words, the year-round school in terms of maximizing the use of our instructional time probably has fewer obstacles to overcome regarding logistics, regarding faculty meetings, regarding the time schedule of the day.
So is that what we want to do, is get this, are you guys all willing to show up at a Wyndham Central retreat or whatever and have this on the agenda and have this conversation with your fellow board members around the CSU?
One thing if I, I'm sorry. One thing that was so exciting to hear about in this report was during these multiple week-long breaks during the year, there would be interventions, enrichment sessions, so school would be open, perhaps not for the holiday vacation, where more instruction is provided for identified or, or all students. So while some go take their vacations, for others, this is like catch-up time, similar to our seat camp.
I think there just needs to be more of an education effort for myself included regarding the pros and cons of all of the, the year-round school as well as the later start date. I think that the advantages may not be as well-known as the disadvantages of each one.
And when they say year-round, it's not 12 months. It's like August 20th to June 20th.
Yeah, that's a-
So it's only like a couple of more weeks. So they're calling it year-round, but it's not like-
It doesn't sound too good, year-round.
Yeah.
No, there's a-
Yeah, it's amazing. Right, but that's really not-
It's not a summer program.
Yeah, you still have an eight-week vacation in summer.
It's really still 36 weeks of instruction.
It's spread out in different ways.
But they're spread out differently across the, across the year, and there is a seven, eight-week vacation or summer break.
So can, can, can we do that? Will, if we schedule it for the summer retreat and have that on the agenda and have a conversation about that? Maybe we can even figure out a topic around the agenda where we can tie this into, you know, enhancing student learning, and all of our students 3K-12, and have this conversation about calendar year and late, sorry. I do think that Yvonne is right, they're, they're two separate issues, but, but they are issues around, you know, people's day, daily lives. So we can figure a way to link them. They just address a different issue. Okay?
Okay.
Whoa. All right. The next thing on here is the NEAS.
Big stuff.
These other three things on here, what-
No, you can, commencement plans, I just want to make sure you know that commencement's happening there and you, you know, you have to be there and we have to sign the thing.
Legislative update, you've all seen them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll read more later on this week and be more informative on that.
Yeah, if they adjourn tonight, we'll know.
Yeah, and board members-
What the update is.
Well, we just addressed this about board members' ideas for the, well, the annual calendar, it's all different, but-
That wasn't ours, but we'll, we'll figure out what we're going to do with that one.
For the WCSU retreat, yeah.
So really, the only thing, am I right? We have, we still have an executive session to do and then just this NEAS thing. And it sounds like you're asking us to share some, you're going to share some thoughts with us, we're going to share some thoughts with you, and then we're going to come back at it later. And it sounds like you're asking us to, um, share some, you're going to share some thoughts with us, we're going to share some thoughts with you, and then we're going to come back at a later date. I know there's a timeframe piece here though, so, so we can't put this off.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
We, we can't put it off too, too long, but I think we should give it a stop, I certainly want to.
Okay.
If the board, unless the board's ready to drop on it right away to give another month.
So are we, um. I mean, we, I've read Durin's, um, the part in the, um, her report about this, I'm assuming all the rest of you have. Do you want the administration to speak to it? Do you want to just ask questions? Do you want to make comments? Do you want them to get a summary? Does the administration want to do that? I'm asking you how to handle it since we're still waiting.
Can we just get a quick, quick summary from, from you guys and just, why you feel one way?
Well, um, if, if I could include Barbara in the conversation too, because she has been such a loyal steering committee member of NEAS at our school. When I started, um, not having, um, been a part of a NEAS reaccreditation process, but basically on day one of my job, having to write basically a thirty-page report, um, about a school I knew nothing about, Leland Gray, and, or very little. Um, and then I had to write a special progress report. And so basically every year I've had to write a, between a fifteen to thirty-page report to get off the warning status, um, that we were put on. And without Barbara, that couldn't have happened, she had led me through this.
Had it not been you as the principal, I would not.
Have done.
Have done. After the last NEAS visit, which Herb Pelletier and I pretty much single-handedly took care of, and I being the detail person, um, took care of a lot of it. I'd rather never to have anything to do with it again, and certainly not in the, the last administration. So, but anyway, Durin made a, made a huge difference to me that I would do it, uh, with her. But that doesn't necessarily mean I think we should go forward.
I mean, we have been meeting quarterly for the past three years. Uh, Dr. Dunn is on the committee because she went through the process when she was at Twin Valley. Kevin Burke joined us because he did a, an extensive training with it after I shared with him a vision of addressing it technologically. Um, and two of our faculty members have gone on three-day visits, one to Montpelier High School and the other one to Champlain Valley Union High School. And they brought back a lot of interesting information about the schools, but not necessarily, um, great enthusiasm about the, the visitation process, which is actually at the end of a two-year self-study. So as I wrote in, um, the description here, uh, that it would take up of, um, up to a half of all professional time of the next two years. Um, and in fact, we decided to, if we were to go ahead with the actual decennial visit, we would want to do it in spring twenty fifteen, just so it wouldn't break into a third year of our professional development time doing it in fall twenty fifteen. So, and then when we saw the cost at a time with sequestration, um, and declining enrollment and concerns about being able to preserve our programs and twenty thousand dollars being, um, perhaps a quarter of a, of a full-time teacher with benefits and everything, um, or, um, however much that is, uh, we, we kind of put the pause button on it and Barbara said, I'm going to contact the, my librarian will serve. And I said, I'll contact the principal to serve. And we combined, um, our findings and shared our findings with the faculty council a couple of weeks ago. So they weighed in on their decision, because one of the questions I asked the other principals was, uh, who was involved in the decision-making whether or not to continue at NEAS? I was most surprised to find that all of the seven, twelve schools left, so it's only, it's five. There are not a ton of seven, twelve schools in the state, but they all decided to leave NEAS, none of them decided to remain. And I was, so that, somehow that was a big aha for me, um, more than the difference between the fact that the average, um, student body was so much larger than, um, in the schools that decided to remain, uh, with NEAS compared to those that decided to leave. And this is not a definitive study of every high school or secondary school in Vermont, these are those that responded to my questions. So, anything else you want to add?
Well, I, I should say that in the last NEAS report, they spoke highly of the librarian, so. I was really pleased about that.
Well-earned.
And, uh, they, also, things have happened in this school because of NEAS, I think these library walls and maybe the, uh, new science rooms. So there is a positive, um, aspect to it. But I think my feeling about my colleagues is they are completely overwhelmed right now with things that we are doing that I'm not sure NEAS has any interest in, based on what you reported about the Common Core, for instance, they don't really look at the Common Core. I just would re, I, I just remember it was onerous last time and, and to put it on top of what we're doing right now, I just think, uh, it's just not going to go swell. We're already working pretty hard on, um, other initiatives, so, and it's a great deal of money. And, um, so, and I've been on two visits myself and, you know, it's kind of a gamble who comes to do the visit and whether they have their own agenda and how they feel about the school, you, you really don't know if they're coming from Massachusetts or Connecticut. I know I was on a team with some Edinburgh schools and they were really out to get one of the schools. I felt that I was visiting, it was a Blodlingdon school, and we fought another member and I fought very hard to make sure that they didn't slam the school. So it's a gamble in, in its own way. It's too bad that's going to be.
So, um, I, I have interest in how, how this is going to affect our students and our student, um, the number of students that choose to come here or not.
Student choice.
You know, based on whether we are a member or not, I mean, you know, there's no local school on this list that, you know, I don't know if Rattleboro does it, but, but it's pretty significant that Burn Burton is there and we do know they're a competition for us. You know, I want to, I mean, I recognize the issues that you're bringing up, Barbara, and I believe in sitting through that, oh, for those years and years that we've been through it with NEAS. I, I, it is, it's a huge burden.
Yeah, you're on the campus, no question.
But, but I want to sort of take it from a student perspective and how does, how does that affect them and their ability to, they, they want, you know, do they want to come here more because we are NEAS-approved? Um, do we, does it help, does the process improve student learning? Does it, do the opposite? You know, I want to know that from the student's perspective.
I think if you asked the student body what NEAS was.
I, I, I don't mean from their perspective, I just mean from their, you know, you know, how it affects their learning. I doubt they have any concern.
Well, I think you're thinking of others' perception, isn't that what you're really getting at?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, does somehow leaving the NEAS accreditation process somehow undervalue or?
Does it change their getting into college?
No.
The college piece is in here, you, you address that pretty well.
Yeah.
So is that pretty hard and fast, that we're comfortable with talking admissions office to colleges?
So, do we know why people stay in it?
I would guess they can afford it to start, right? I mean, well, a larger school might be able to afford it.
Yeah, there are two, the only reason why a school would consider not be, no longer participating in it is because it's too onerous, too expensive, and it doesn't yield enough benefit internally for the school. Now, one thing that you have to realize is that the present staff, those that have been here for a while, have had the experience of a reflect, self-reflection process of two years and plans where they really felt that they were made to jump through some hoops. And it really didn't relate to what they were trying to get done here at Leland Gray. That, that, that experience was compounded by the lack of continuity and instructional leadership. Where you had three principals, four principals now over the same period of this cycle of implementation and follow-up. So not only did Durin have to write a report about which she knew nothing of the process originally, but her predecessor had to write a report, or in fact failed to write a report, depending on how you look at it. And there was, you know, Lloyd Zaborski had to write a report, which he had nothing to do with the, with the process to begin with. Now, that's a, that's a problem we have in schools and around the country in terms of instructional leadership and being able to retain leaders, you know, for a long, long period of time, so they can actually get something done. But, uh, so I would suggest that, you are hitting on something, Barbara, the larger schools have more faculty. If you have a hundred faculty and you have to form six committees, well, that's more manageable than when you have forty faculty and you have to form six committees. So.
That's very true.
You know, you have to have a committee for each standard, they have these standards and you have to research the, how, you know, the various indicators you're going to stand. But what I'm saying is that a larger school is not likely to question the process as much because they're never going to be, they're less likely to be in the forced choice of being overstressed about whatever else they have to do. They have the financial resources and they have the personnel resources to get it done. You know, they have three assistant principals, they assign one of the assistant principals to do it.
So when a student's trying to make a decision about what school to attend, because there are quite a few choice, um, schools, they never take that into consideration, is that what?
I have, I, I'm going to try to research that. I actually have had lengthy conversations with NEAS headquarters, you know, about this in preparation for this question. And I am not prepared to make a recommendation to the board on it tonight because I am still waiting some in, information. Specifically, there have been two schools that have recently done a NEAS accreditation study and have linked and, and integrated the Common Core standards. At least that's claimed, the extent to which that's true is what I want to see the documentation of. Uh, there are eighty schools that are members of NEAS in New England that are in size similar to us, three to four hundred. Durin points out that, interestingly, in Vermont, seven through twelve schools, at least there are five seven through twelve schools who have, have no longer, uh, engage in this entirely voluntary process. But the issue about reputation and whether you get more points or more status because you're NEAS-accredited is something that you should be considering through your own devices on the web and otherwise. Because it is pretty much a public relations out there and the public issue. And, uh, I, I, I understand your point about Burn Burton and neighboring, neighboring schools. Uh, and I don't know, uh, what'll ha, happen in other schools, but I know that in this school, the prior should be what we can do best for our own students. And I'm struggling with the issue of what resources we have, not only financial, but in terms of personnel. And Durin's initiatives are beginning to show some fruit. And we cannot afford to let up on our support of the faculty engaged in those reformations, those, those, those changes in instruction. And, and it isn't just a matter of changing a lesson here or there, it's a sequence and it's a total deal.
Hundred percent agree with you on that, there's no, no doubt whatsoever on that. The only thing is we also need to have a vibrant student body and a, and a growing student body, so that's a critical piece to be part of.
I, I think, I'm sorry, I think that it, I think it's parents looking at the school rather than the students. I don't think they consider NEAS at all, I'm just, this is my thoughts, I think they look at test scores and the, uh, knee caps and.
Graduation rates.
Graduation rates and, and all those things.
As in T.
Science department based on the science scores. I don't think NEAS.
And co-curriculars, that's the biggest thing.
And co-curriculars.
Why'd you come here?
Yeah.
Sports.
Right, and drama.
You hear that, and drama.
I don't think anybody who knows what NEAS is out there on that level of looking at a school, is my feeling, but.
Just on.
Hold on, just, just a second, it's Mike's first and then, Mike's first and then Paul.
I was going to say, let's, let's Stephen collect the information he was looking for and come back to this another night.
We're going to come back to this another night without a doubt.
I, I just want to, I'm on their website, so I'm just reading through their facts, right? So it says accreditation is voluntary, it represents an institution's willingness to abide by the standards and to open itself regularly to examination by outside evaluators familiar with higher education. As such, accreditation is recognized as a symbol of accountability to the public. So I, I think to me the difference is, is do we, do we feel like that, that outside, the outside people coming in are, are going to notice things that we're not noticing? I mean, that would be the difference, right?
Yeah, well, let me be clear.
And is there another way to do that?
Is there another way to do that within, within people that we have through our?
I, I've served on two of these visiting, maybe three, and I've been in three of these self-studies. So in my experience, that thing about the outside evaluator, what experience, now, what, what it's based upon is volunteers, like teachers from our own school here, going to serve on these committees. And certainly they are dedicated and they have perspective and experience. But this isn't, this isn't, I think Barbara alluded to the fact that it can be kind of variable depending on what you get for the, the Duke's mixture or the draw you get in, in the committee. And, uh, so that is a part of the process that really, from my statistical analytical point of view, is not reliable inter-tester, inter, inter-committee. And that's the biggest criticism of NEAS and the biggest concern of NEAS about trying to maintain reliability of perception and report between and among committees. They never send the same committee to a different school, so they can't, there's no way of verifying this. And, uh, and it is, it's, we have some other things that we have to do. You are on the AYP list, so you have to do the Green Mountain Star, uh, self-study. We have already engaged in that. This is a process that we don't have a choice about and there is any faculty member saying, well, wait a minute, now we just, we're doing this neat, this, this Green Mountain Star, we have some goals. We're trying to get to the, the goal of, you know, a perfect, perfect world with everybody AYP. So what about this NEAS, how does that fit together? Wait a minute, I got to jump through something else here, I got to go to another committee meeting, I got, I mean, I'm just telling you what the, what the, the, the bur, the, the burden of our, our limited resource time within the building is something that I need to be sensitive to when I discuss the issue with Durin. And, uh, and also field, uh, the research from the NEAS organization themselves, because obviously they, they should be heard on this issue as well. And that's why I'm not rushing to judgment.
Patty.
Um, just one thing, the twenty thousand dollars really bothers me. That's a lot of money to spend on something that's, could keep us from moving forward with some of our other initiatives. But also, what is this NESC? Is that some competing, some new?
Second-class schools.
Thing that might make up for the lack of the NEAS and?
So I looked into it, uh, and I think it's funny how similar the names are, the acronyms. It's just, this is sort of too close.
Everything starts with N E in this region.
N E S C.
Well, yeah, it's just pretty, I mean, it's, uh, all the same but one letter, right?
Mm.
Uh, and so, uh, so I was curious about, um, those thirteen schools that have been inducted and, you know, a little less than half of them are not accredited by NEAS. Um, and this no longer have never been accredited, so that was basically me comparing their membership with those who responded. So I didn't, so for example, Williamstownville High School, I don't know if they've ever been a NEAS member, um, but they haven't been in, they didn't respond to my email. So, this, while it's a professional membership organization and they have an induction process, the school needs to sign a pledge committing to, um, performance-based achievement. So finding other ways of attaining standards outside of the traditional classroom. And it's literally a pledge and there are, high, the high schools sign on and they have some twenty different, um, uh, post-secondary institutions that have also signed this pledge, none of them are state universities, none of them are competitive private universities. They're small colleges in, or, um, in and around New England. So I feel very uncomfortable with signing a pledge committing to learning, accrediting learning outside the classroom when I know if we need kids to learn, uh, physics and, you know, the ninth grade physics course, there's really very little that compares to that. That expertise that's provided by the teacher in the classroom. Mathematics is another perfect example, through experiential learning, you're not going to get to pre-calculus. So I, so while it's very interesting, I would like to, uh, look at it some more, it's, it's not, they're, they're, it's, it's an induction based on the practices that they preach, independent studies, internships, alternative learning, um, like our, our, um, our home program. We do these things in big ways for our. program, we do these things in big ways for a small school. So, I have no concerns that we, uh, may not be considered if we want to pursue this, but it's not our sole pursuit. So, and, and they don't have the evaluation, the ten-year, and I don't know what their membership fees are.
Well, this, this raises the issue that, I, I think this warrants some more research on the, on the back office inside education community administrative level. But, um, but it, it also requires a sense from the board, or at least you need to be prepared to, to make, uh, you know, to consider a recommendation and make a, make a pretty significant decision. That mention of twenty thousand dollars, by the way, is interesting to me because as I pointed out, you know, it's twenty thousand dollars whether you've got three hundred kids or whether you've got five thousand kids.
That's what the difference is.
That's pretty clear.
One thing I wanted to mention, Emily, 'cause you brought this up, um, a principal who worked, um, in the District of Proctor and, it's West Rutland, I can't remember, I'm sure it's listed here, that in the five-year period after they left NEASK, they had one question from else, from the public.
Yeah.
Right, and it regarded an international student. I was very surprised to find out how low that was.
And, um, maybe as you're doing the research, you can find out a, a little bit about those schools that are in competition with us, which is like Brattleboro and the local, around Green Mountain, Brattleboro, you know, Bellas Falls, whether they're all members or not and maybe-
Right, yeah, I, I, I think Twin Valley is left or considered leading, but I mean, it's, you know, that's a typical situation of all the small schools that are facing this.
I actually remember hearing something about that with Twin Valley. I, I think they are under that conversation or something.
And I have to say that the director I spoke to at NEASK is, you know, in no way tries to claim that this is important for you to get your kids into college or anything like that. I mean, they're not making that claim anymore. That really was twenty years ago what, what I had heard. Because it really was a New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And it is still accrediting colleges.
Well, from my perspective, it kind of went along with a little bit what, what Paul was just reading off there. It's about accountability and it's about, um, making sure we're, um, providing the best environment and education for our kids and is this helping that? So, I guess if we can answer that-
Right, how, how would we do that? If we drop out of this, how are we meeting that?
Oh, and self-assess.
With some outside people too, you know, not necessarily, you know.
Or not even self-assess, but, but also do, do some of the, like, the outside.
Yes, you know, I think that's the-
Because I think a lot of other schools might wanna get in on something like that. You almost like develop your own group that all the schools-
Something that's more, uh, more effective, more closely linked to the Common Core standards and to the, uh-
Yeah, twenty, everybody's saying twenty grand each.
I feel like they're evaluating us constantly.
Oh, I know.
I mean, there's, I mean, there's so much data that we review and it's only tangential that I provide some of it to, to NEASK. They don't ask for a whole lot of quantitative data, it's mostly narrative.
A lot of report, right?
And, so, between the Title I grant that I do need to report a lot of quantitative data on, that's annual, that I'm working on right now, reporting on the school board's goals that we set a couple of summers ago, plus the Green Star for not making adequate yearly progress. And the reporting group for that is the Curriculum Council. And I've had to split my time between the Curriculum Council and the NEASK Steering Committee. And these two committees really should be one and the same, but I dare say that no one on the Curriculum Council wants anything to do with NEASK.
No, it's not possible.
They, they want the internal, um, uh, evaluation. And we have an outside resource from the Department of Education, who, our agency of education, Bruce Smith, who worked with us extensively, I think he made three visits down here in the fall, and he would come just as often in the spring if we felt that we had the need for it. But, um, and, so I, I feel like we have a lot of reporting in, in place and when it's good, I'll report it to the public. Uh, and of course, there's some reports we have to make, like around the kneecap scores. Uh, and I can't wait for next meeting when I can tell you about the, um, the college acceptance rates that we have this year, which are probably the highest that has ever been, I believe. And, so, uh, in terms of the external accreditation, uh, we, if we decided to ask a visiting team that we pulled together, um, for our own regional accountability as, um, the Otter Valley area is looking at doing, they, because they have named other organizations and having their own s, regional way for some kind of evaluation, I think that would be terrific, learning from colleagues with, and, uh, having the same goals. Because we all have to write Title I reports, we all have to write AYP reports, uh, and we all have to be accountable to our board based on the goals that they've set.
Yeah, we have election plans for school improvement.
That's right.
Not all SU's have strategic plans, but we have that as well.
It sounds like it would, the way you described it, it sounds like it could be a much more collaborative process as opposed to some scary thing that happens and like, oh my God.
And you can focus it more on where you're going. It's, it's the thing I don't like about this is, if our direction, and I think we're working in a good direction now, they come in or have different goals, it's like-
Yeah. It is, yeah, it's, that's, that is always my hardest, the, what, the toughest thing to deal with is that this process is sort of separate from what our goals are and, and, or can be. And that's the scary part.
I mean, I must have asked them five times, you have a curriculum committee, a, um, an instruction committee, and an assessment committee. You gotta be kidding me. These are all inseparable.
Right.
If we need curriculum revision, how are you gonna deliver it? How are you gonna assess it for kids having known it? How can you have different people on those three committees when you only have, the maximum we have is six people, which is just with two part-time, in a department? They're gonna be represented on all three of those committees? And, and the response was, uh, well, you have the same people on the different committees. And Barbara and I are, uh-
Yeah, that was exactly the prob, that was exactly the problem in the last series in terms of the stress. And you probably served on more than one committee too.
Yeah, I did, I did.
We could, we have to get parent volunteers and that's another issue that's challenging. Okay, well, let's not, let's not debate.
So, yeah, I mean, and, and I just, one, one last thing, I mean, have you checked with the organizations, your organization and VPA and DSA? And I, I would be happy to check with the SBA as well, um, to see whether they're getting any feedback, any of those organizations are getting feedback about it either. I'd like to know that and I'll be happy to check with the SBA.
Yeah, I'm at a conference next week.
I would be happy to inquire at, um-
I mean, maybe just the question is, is this a question that comes up?
Well, you were following up with them, you were following up with them anyway, that's why you got to those principals, right?
No, I just keep the principals' list up. Being, being that's a legislative session, I would like to bother the VPA as little as possible because they probably hear from me more than any other principal, so it's-
It's fucking ridiculous.
I just wanted to say that, well, one thing I said to the faculty a couple of years ago was, we don't need NEASK, we have Durin. Which I did say. But, the other thing is that, you know, one of the good things, as I think I said before, was that we've made some changes to the building structure based on recommendations from NEASK. And, so I would hate to lose that, you know, that was always kind of a-
You're talking about facilities.
Facilities, what their concerns about the facility always used to nudge us in a direction, including the library wall, if I'm not mistaken. So, you'd have to really be dedicated to continuing that, um, review of the building and the facilities and the needs, you know, and be able to make the case to the voters, not just saying, well, NEASK says we have to do it, you know, to maintain our accreditation, so.
Did NEASK play any role in the Dutton Gym renovation?
Um, no, I don't think so.
I don't remember any connection, Frank?
No.
No.
Unlike Brattleboro, you know, and Brattleboro was then being one reason for the urgency of their bone, was NEASK said that, uh, we will not accredit you and they were very concerned about that ten, fifteen years ago. And that was a major emphasis for that bond, the largest bond in the state of Vermont at the time, but things have changed since then.
In terms of membership of area schools, very important question, so Arlington is a member, so is Bellas Falls, uh, Brattleboro is a member.
But it's a ten-year process, so I mean, if they're coming on the tail end of the-
Uh, the most recent is two thousand and seven. Um, sorry, not most recent, the, the, the least recent is two thousand and seven. Uh, that's funny, they've mounted, oh, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Um, Otter Valley is still listed here, but they're not members anymore. Rutland is accredited. Springfield is. Um, Twin Valley is.
Well, just like I said before about the innovative schools, I, I don't really care about the label so much as I want us to be an innovative school, you know? I feel the same way about this. It's not so much hanging on a label, it's just making sure that we're doing the best thing we can for it and, and we're accountable for it, so.
Okay, so they, you'll look, you'll look for some research, further research with Durin and me, and you'll be doing your own.
Yeah, I was gonna say, board members can do that too as well, you know, if people you know.
From a public eye, what, what you see as being a trade-offs. If, if you would, uh, you know, and keep in mind that the, the, the issue is pretty, a pretty heavy one, both from personnel-
Yeah, no question.
-reformation, implementation point of view, a financial point of view, and then the public relations point of view, those are all aspects to it, keep in mind.
Made me cringe when we started talking about doing it again. I mean, it feels like it was just yesterday and we went through the process and, because it's really never ended, we've had so-
Well, was there a timeline again that you needed to really, you needed to make a decision?
Well, we should decide by June, we could decide now. They already have training sessions for the people, for the schools that are on our cycle.
So, we need to make a decision at the next meeting, I would suggest, right?
Yeah, we can't keep kicking it down the road.
Did you get a sense from the, of the faculty's point of view? Because faculty council did have an opportunity to discuss, um, these findings. Um, so their recommendation was to leave NEASK?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would surprise me at all based on, but I've maybe had a little more experience with some others about-
But they had the same deliberations as you all have. And, um, but it was unanimous in that every team, while they posed questions, and there's four different teams, uh, they all came to the same conclusion mainly because of all of the other things we have in place or in evaluation process. It's a funny thing because no, um, and this, I guess is really an argument for either side, because I'll, I'll do what needs to be done. And I've told the faculty, I hope convincingly, that Leland and Gray will not do anything for NEASK alone, except for twenty-five thousand dollars. So, for example, our adoption of the Vermont Comprehensive Assessment Tool and, uh, and, I mean, everything needs to be good for us as well. We would get the most out of the evaluation process. All of the strains on the faculty are significant concerns. Uh, there's another thing that I wanted to mention, which is, if you ask the community what great things have happened at Leland and Gray, two thousand and twelve Teacher of the Year, Journey East, the science scores, NEASK is not on that radar.
Would it be easy for Steve or Durin to put together in, in the documentation you guys are gonna give us, because we gotta make a decision, you know, pretty promptly, can we see something that talks about the, from the last times they were here, what they said, you know, we should do and what came out of that? So, we can get a sense of what the value was? I mean, I heard some of it. I heard the building stuff, but I'd like to see, you know, really what they said and then kind of talk-
Actually, the documents of public could be, is one of the documents, could be released version that we could certainly show you.
I mean, and we could get a sense of really what, what, what's really common.
Yeah, I think you get an idea of the detail and what, what, what's in there. I mean, that's another part of the process.
I just wanna thank you for considering this.
Absolutely, it would be awful not to. Um, and if you guys, if, if there's anybody on the board who thinks about a question that you'd like to have answered before the June meeting, please make sure you just let either me know or, or Stephen.
Send it my way, yeah, Durin's busy, so.
Stephen or I? Because, you know, if something occurs to you or somebody, you talk to somebody and you don't know the answer to a question, make sure we know it so that we can have all that information.
Right, and we will try to get out the usual information before the board meetings and be prepared to ask the questions and make a decision.
Okay, any other discussion about this? Comments? No?
Our next meeting is June eleventh.
We've got bills and pay orders, somebody-
Need to approve the bills and pay orders. So, I get it.
Okay, it's been approved, they're somewhere.
I gave it back to Frank after I reviewed it. Oh, you need one, you wanna share it?
I'll just read the, I'll just read, I'm not gonna read, I'll read the summary, quick one.
You can find this somewhere.
You're supposed to find it for me, it's here somewhere. Somebody, somebody, was it in here, Frank?
Yep. Usually, is that right? Yeah, I didn't see it.
Guess we have to sit here and add it all up.
I can just give you that.
Do you have the top?
We need that nice summary document. So, it's usually right at the front, you guys pull it out, but it wasn't there and I never saw it.
First of all-
Well, it'll take a while to list it all.
I mean, is it all right if we just say we, that all the bills and payers are gonna review them?
Yeah, it has presented and, um, we can send the list to Cara.
Okay. Fine with me. There's a motion already on the table to approve the bills and pay orders as reviewed. Um, and there was a second by Mike. So, um, any other comments or questions about them or those you're reviewing?
I just wanna say, I can't believe we're paying the state of Vermont to allow us to have ground, or grain runoff.
That's just goofy.
Why, why don't they give us a break? You'll have to ask the agency.
There you go. You're welcome to pursue.
For eighty bucks, I'm not. Everybody's got their-
Yes, everybody does. Okay, so if there's no other comments or questions about the bills and payors, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, any abstentions? And Frank will send those to you, or someone will.
Yeah.
Okay, consent agenda.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve consent agenda and there's a second by Mike. Any comments, questions? If not, if not all those in favor approving the consent agenda, the amendment's April ninth, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, intentions? Okay, motion passes, we have an executive session.
Moved to go into executive session for contractual discussion.
Okay, it's been moved, executive, Mike and Joe. Just before we vote on that, just to let you know that the, the next meetings, you all see what they are on there, but I'll just state them. Anyway, the red meeting is June fifth at seven PM. The, our next regular board meeting is June eleventh here at seven PM. And our Wyndham Central meeting is May twentieth, Leland and Gray Gym at seven PM. Actually, that one's at six thirty, your gym is wrong. It's at six thirty, with the, with the public pro, program to be at seven. Okay, so all those in favor going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay.